Welcome, 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 ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to another edition of Space Invaders TV. I'm your host Rashawn, AKA Looker. Yes, it is March the 11th, 2022, and we're talking about Torchlight Academy. Torchlight Academy is located in Raleigh, 3211 Brammer Drive, Raleigh, North Carolina. And their charter is being revoked by the state, by the state board. They want to shut them down, too many federal violations, conflicts of interest, they're falsifying records. Yeah, the school is led by Donnie, he's the executive director, Donnie McQueen. His wife Cynthia McQueen is the principal of Torchlight Academy. Their daughter, Shontreece Adams, is the school's exceptional children program director. Not to mention, not to mention, the school is managed by Donnie McQueen's company, which has been paid nearly three million dollars since 2016, according to the state of North Carolina. And it's like Donnie McQueen is acting like he doesn't even get it. He doesn't see nothing he did wrong in this situation. And this is what I'm talking about when I spoke a couple of weeks ago, when I spoke about the charter schools and the magnet schools and how they're under the watchful eye of the state. And how if one school does anything, any one of those charter schools do anything out of the guidelines of what is set forth by that said state, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna shut you down. Because they're not gonna have their funds in jeopardy, you know, because of, you know, this one school, which isn't a traditional school, you know, violating laws. And my issue with charter schools today is that, not saying all of them, but what I've been coming under noticing, a lot of them that's been getting shut down, it's always about the funding, and then they complain later about them not having and being able to get the funding. But these are things you should think about before you open up a charter. But what happens is you have these quote-unquote savvy businessmen, entrepreneurs, that just say, okay, yeah, I can open up a school, and they get with some buddies, or they get some, they have some people to back them with funding, and they go and they open up these schools, and they're running them as if it's just like a, it's a business, but you're dealing with children is the business, and you're dealing with laws. And you have to, if you're gonna do anything dealing with the children, when you're talking education, you need to care. You need to be, you need to take some time and dive into what you're doing, and know what you're getting into, and know, and the long term, and know that you can sustain, and making sure that you're gonna dot your i's and cross your t's, because when you're dealing with state, with the state and funding, you don't want to play around. I don't care if you are a sole proprietor. If you, 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 you dealing with state funding, you better, you better dot your i's and cross your t's, you know, because you don't want to mess around. You're looking at some heavy, heavy fines and penalties, you're looking at prison time when you start messing, messing around with, with state, with, with state business. When you start messing around, and that goes for, for whatever, anytime you're dealing with state or federal, or federal funding, or federal and state business. What happens is they got these people that they're seeing dollar signs. And they're playing, they think that they can get into this education sector and play these games. So, my, my whole thing has always been, the charter school, like whatever you're offering, instead of everyone still trying to put this bad stigma on traditional public schools, we need to put, this is why you need to put in more focus, more attention, more time, needs to be put into traditional public schools, because at the end of the day, they are the, the top of the pyramid. It's a public school, it's free, it's free. You don't have to worry about the school getting shut down, if things are being done right, you don't have to worry about the school being shut down. The worst case, the state will come in and take over a school, you know, and totally be like, right, totally have that one said school on lockdown, like they're controlling everything, the funding and everything. The funding will no longer be controlled by the county, it will be controlled by the state, you know. So they know where every penny is going when they come in, you know. So that's, that's almost like the worst case, you know, it's, it's kind of rare when you today, if you're hearing a public, traditional public school getting shut down, it's kind of rare. But these charter schools, they get, they get shut down all the time, so what's going on right here and with Mr. Donnie McQueen and his family, what they got going on over there at Torchlight Academy in Raleigh, North Carolina? This ain't nothing new, this is the same thing you hearing all the time. So we're gonna get into it, I'm gonna read from a publication called Indy Week, a local publication in North Carolina. We also got, you, you can news and observer, observer, northcarolina.com, you can go to wrl.com, abc11.com, and you can find out about what I'm telling you right now about Torchlight Academy getting their charter revoked by the state of North Carolina. So right now, we're gonna read Indy Week. Torchlight Academy Faces Closure After State Charter School Advisory Board Recommendation. The charter school advisory board on Monday recommended that Torchlight Academy be closed due to glaring conflicts of interest and a pattern of self-dealing by the school's management firm, Torchlight Academy Schools LLC. The state board is expected to consider the recommendations when it meets on Thursday. The state board generally follows the charter school advisory board's recommendation. Despite its academic success, charter school advisory board chairwoman Cheryl Turner said "The missteps at Torchlight threatened federal school funding for the entire state." So the mishaps at Torchlight Academy, they threatening the whole state funding. That, that's just how, that's just how reckless they've been over there. The fiscal management and operation they've got, the fiscal management and operations, they've got issues, they've got serious issues. And the issues escalated to the place that they became a threat to the entire state of North Carolina in terms of funding from the federal government, Turner said. That's a big deal. Raleigh businessman Don McQueen operates the for-profit education management organization. The management Torchlight Academy, Three Rivers Academy, a Burt T. County charter school managed by McQueen, has been ordered closed by the state board of education. Because of fiscal and operational shortcomings, McQueen has been dogged by claims that students' individualized education program documents were altered in the student data management system monitored by the state. The individualized education program ensures students with disabilities receive specialized instruction and related services. Torchlight's exceptional children program was under the leadership of McQueen's daughter, Shontreece Andrews. When the violations occurred, some charter board members contend Andrews was not qualified to hold the management level position for which she was reportedly paid sixty-five thousand a year. She reportedly remains employed by the school as a special education teacher. So I'm gonna stop right there for a brief second. So she wasn't, if she, if she, if she, if she wasn't qualified to hold the, the position she had before she became a special education teacher. What was she before that they said? So it's like exceptional children's program was under the leadership of McQueen's daughter. So the exceptional children's program, if she wasn't qualified to do that, and then everyone around knew that Shontreece Andrews, the daughter of Donnie McQueen and Cynthia McQueen, then how was she qualified to do and be a special education teacher? I'm just, just questioning, let's move on. The questionable records change, changes. The questionable record changes made by Andrews has the effect of making old IEPs look like new ones. Wow. Wow, the individualized education programs are required to ensure students with disabilities receive specialized instruction and related services. General educators must meet with parents and submit new data before individualized education program changes are made. Torchlight has also been scrutinized for its handling reporting of grant funds received under the federal Individuals with Disability Education Act. The grant provides federal funding to ensure free and appropriate education is provided to students with special needs at no cost to parents. Cheryl Thomas, Director of Exceptional Children's Division at the State Board, the State Department, I'm sorry, State Department of Public Education told the charter school advisory board last month that the federal money must be used as intended. If we were in violation of not, if we are in violation of not ensuring that a school or district is providing a free and appropriate public education, then our federal dollars can be delayed, they can be reduced, they can be pulled back, Thomas said. So we have a financial statewide obligation that could impact us if we are not vigilant. On Monday, McQueen acknowledged that the mistakes were made, but said that nearly six hundred black and Hispanic children in grades K through eight, the school serves will be in harm if the school closed. You think, McQueen? They've been in harm. Everything you've been doing, McQueen, that you've been putting the children in harm, do you understand that you've, you've entered an arena where you're dealing with children, and on top of the children and education, you're dealing with federal funding? Do you, do you, do you even understand that? Do you even understand that? You know, I'm starting to wonder, I'm, I'm, you know, when I read this story some days ago, or last week, actually, I really was wondering about you, buddy. And I was really wondering about your resume, and I was really wondering, Don McQueen, if you are who you say you are? And if you have the qualifications that you say you are. See, I don't want to go on and, and go down the rabbit hole and start assuming things, but I, I, I really start to wonder about you, but I'm gonna let the people be the judge of that when we go through your resume real quick. Okay, let's finish on, our parents came because of the number of men in our building. Specifically men, because it's a dearth of men in the lives of our children, and we recognize that when somebody else might not see it all, and don't have a way to address it, McQueen said. Voice growing shrill. The recommendations to close the school is based on violation of laws and regulations, including special education laws and federal conflict of interest and self-dealing regulations. Violation of charter agreement, including failure to produce requested documents, failure to provide adequate oversight and management of the school, failure to meet general accepted standards of fiscal management, failure to provide the NC Department of Public Instruction with required documents of expenditure of state and federal money, and comply with the fiscal requirements, allowing the ongoing self-dealing and conflicts of interest by the EMO Torchlight Academy Schools LLC. Both McQueen and wife Cynthia McQueen are employed by Torchlight and are officers in the management firm, which state officials said constitutes a conflict of interest. Don McQueen is the school's executive director, and Cynthia McQueen is its principal. Torchlight Board Chairman Pamela Bankly acknowledged that the board had failed in its oversight duties and knew little about how an EMO works when it contracted, contracted for management services with McQueen Company in 2015. The board recognizes that we have made some mistakes, Lee said candidly. Probably one of the biggest mistakes was not understanding how a, an EMO works. When we entered into that contract, Lee said, the board planned to ask McQueen to step down as executive director of school if not allowed to reopen, if not allowed to remain open, and put in place someone who will help us to rectify these complaint, compliant issues. The state conflict exists, the same conflict exists for Cynthia McQueen. But Lee said, the board had not discussed whether she should step down. We have never knowingly done anything wrong managing Torchlight, Cynthia McQueen said. Clearly, we have a lot of paperwork flaws and procedural flaws that we thank you for bringing that to our attention, because they need to be corrected. She said that if the same investigatory process was used to examine any other school, the same mistake would likely be found. No school is without mistakes, Cynthia McQueen said, no school is without ever, no person is without ever. Meanwhile, Lee would not comment to partying ways with EMO. All right, I'm gonna stop right there, because see, we going right here, they trying to play this game. Cynthia McQueen and Donnie McQueen, they trying to play this game, right? And one thing what they gotta understand, right? You playing a game with the state, right? You playing, first of all, let's, let's think of it this way. Torchlight Academy, Donnie McQueen, and Cynthia McQueen, you're playing on the grounds, you're playing on someone else's turf, right? They, they, they allowed you to play in, on their field, right? They're, they're, they're sharing the field with you, right? It's their property. And, but they're allowing you to, to share the field, right? As long as you abide by the rules and regulations that they have set forth, right? So you, you're trying to sit there and play on them and say, and then you're gonna throw the ball back at them and say, hey, yeah, well, every school has flaws, they all have flaws. They know the schools have flaws, but they're, they're schools that have flaws. They're gonna, they, they, they deal, they deal with that, they know how to deal with it. So you, so you guys had three schools, and they all got flaws, okay? They tired of playing with you, because you're playing with all of their money, the entire state money. You're, you're playing with all the schools in this state money. They're not gonna have your three schools, and it's a lot of money. The little three million dollars that your husband has made with his, with you guys' management firm, that you both sit on a board of since 2016, guess what, Torchlight, they received three million dollars. Now, don't even tell him what they received for the other two schools, right? But you guys gonna sit there and play with them, and you're playing with their, you're playing with their funding, you're playing with the state of North Carolina school money. And, and you're trying to sit there and play this game with them as if you don't know that you had foul-ups and paperwork. Now, let's, let's go here, before you sat in front of this court here, they, they sent you paperwork. You, you guys received paperwork, you guys just failed not to answer it, okay? Now see, when I do my research, I like to use different publications, right? So we're gonna go back and forth, I'm gonna go ahead to WRL, and I want to read what Jay said to you, right? A six-hundred-student charter school in Raleigh must close next year. The North Carolina State Board of Education voted to revoke Torchlight Academy charter Thursday without discussion. The board discussed the matter and closed session on Wednesday. This is not a discussion that has been made lightly, said Amy White, chairman, chairwoman of the Board's Education Innovation and Charter Schools Committee. White cited a thorough investigation for multiple investigators within the State Department of Public Instruction. The revocation comes three days after the charter school advisory board recommended revocation. The advisory board met for eight hours Monday after a few months of discussion on issues at Torchlight Academy. Okay, let me go down to some more here, all right? While the school's initials, initial issues raised last year largely concerned the operations of its exceptional children program, most of the discussion Monday revolved around financial record-keeping and self-dealing. The state noted the school's executive director, Donnie McQueen, is also the owner of the school's for-profit management organization that has been paid nearly three million dollars. Mondays, meeting featured tense questioning of the school board of directors who largely claimed ignorance of either what was going on at the school, or the extent to which school leaders' actions could violate rules. School officials largely deflected questions regarding school management and noted that the school has been posting C performance grades or student growth levels that exceeded expectation. Academic performance was not a factor in the state's investigation. The charter school advisory board recommends the school charter be revoked. Violation laws and regulations, including special education laws violating, violating the school's charter agreement by failing to produce documents or provide adequate oversight of the school, failing to meet fiscal management standards, allowing self-serving conflicts of interest to take place. White cited those same reasons, as well as a number of different issues that were shared with the board and closed session. And the making the recommendation Thursday to revoke the school's charter, the State Board of Education voted ten to one to revoke the school's charter. The third charter the board has revoked among Torchlight Academy Schools LLC managed schools in the past year. This is the third school that they've got, had revoked in one year. Only Lieutenant Governor Mark Robinson voted on Thursday, voted no Thursday, but the vote covered several items unrelated to the revocation, and it was not clear which items Robinson objected to, and it, and if it was Torchlight Academy's charter revocation, Robinson did not speak during the two-day public session of the State Board of Education this month, until casting his no vote earlier. North Carolina Charter School Advisory Board has recommended closing one of the state's oldest charter schools because of financial and management concerns, including that school leadership is profiting from school contracts. So that's, we're gonna leave it right there. They, they've been watching y'all, you are under the watchful eye. Y'all the oldest school, so y'all shouldn't, y'all, y'all, Torchlight Academy is the oldest charter school in the state of North Carolina. Y'all should have known better. They've been watching you guys, they see what's going on. You guys thought you had it in the bag, y'all thought y'all, you cannot play somebody in their game. See, you stepped into an arena, stepped into a field, Donnie McQueen and Cynthia McQueen, you stepped into an arena that you, you ain't fit for this, you ain't, you are not built for this, this is a state, you, you coming in on state property, grounds, I should say, okay? You're playing in their field. How are you gonna play them with their money, and they're, and they're still, you know, how are you gonna play them? How are you gonna play them when they set the rules? You don't set the rules, they set the rules. This goes for anybody that, that, that's seeking to open a charter school in the future, from here on out. When you step into a said state, you're playing, you're playing on their field, and you are playing by the rules that they set. You can't play, how are you gonna play somebody when they set the, when they set the table? When they prepare the food, how are you gonna tell them? That, how are you gonna tell them what, what's enough and what's not enough? When they bought it, they prepared it, they served it. How, how you gonna, how you gonna try to play them? So this is the problem we have, so then when we go in and we think about Donnie McClellan, he's just, I mean, Donnie McClellan, sorry. Donnie McQueen, right? He's a successful entrepreneur, with an iconic career as a stockbroker, pharmaceutical, regional sales representative, and a mortgage broker and educator. This is, this is, this is off of his Facebook, this is how it started off on his Facebook, who he is, explaining who he is. Now, this guy moved around in major industries, in the pharmaceutical industry, and we know the big pharma, they've been getting money for years. Why would you leave that? Why, why would you want to move up in there, Don, Donnie? This is what you done, right? Why, why would you want, why, why not? Okay. So, so you, so you move on from there, no timeline, really, I didn't get a timeline off you, then you went to a stockbroker. So you can buy, you can, you can buy or sell, so you, so you have a license, you have the the regulatory authority license, you, you have that? I guess you have that, you registered with that, so, okay. Why wouldn't you want to stay, stay, stay in the stock market? I mean, they've been getting a lot of money there, too. I guess that wasn't enough either. So then you moved on to a mortgage, you a mortgage broker? Well, we know the, the housing market been doing real well, as, you know, they've been doing real well for a while since, once they got cleared with the twenty, two thousand and eight, you know, crash on the housing market, you know, once they cleared that, man, I mean, they've been all right. So like, you, you, you left that, but there's no real timeline on that, so I don't know. Then it says you're proficient in IT. Now, we know that IT is money, so you walk away from that, too. So then you figured that, and let's be clear here. Pharmaceutical sales rep, you know, as of 2019, the salary was a hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. That's with bonuses included, okay? And you walk away from that, that's a pretty good salary, on the low end, you can make like seventy-three thousand dollars as a pharmaceuticals sales rep. That's on the low end, you can make seventy-three thousand, all right? So, I'm trying to figure out, then you, you wanted to switch lanes, so I guess you talked to some folks, and they said, hey, yeah, you could get into the, you know, you know, you can, you can open up a charter school, there's a lot of money to be made there. So everything start clicking, then you open up a management company, then, so you say, yeah, I can open up a management company, then I can manage the, the, the schools as well, and I can get another separate check from that, too? Wow, then, so, and I'm getting paid off the school from being the executive director, so I'm getting two checks. One fatter than the other, I'm eating big. And so now you want to come and you do that, and then you want to have the nerve to stand in front of the state board and tell them, oh, the children, if this happens, the children are gonna be in trouble. You know what you sound like? This is a, this is what greedy mongers sound like. Greed, you don't even see nothing you done wrong. You or your wife, you don't see nothing you doing wrong. You think that you done everything right. You, you think that, oh, that's just a small thing, that's what happened when greed sets in. You know, when, when greed has set in, set in someone, the only thing they see is dollar signs. They can't even understand anything else outside of that. They can't understand no one else's pain, they can't understand that the state is telling them, hey, you know you violated. You know, that this can actually turn into some charges for you, you know, do, do you even understand that? Like, you, you should just go ahead and let them shut them doors, and you better walk on away with whatever coins you got. And you just better hope by God that nobody else comes and swoops around that corner and snatches you guys up. Because you've been lying and falsifying records, federal violations. You can't play with federal funding, you can't play with the funds, you can't play like that. Do you understand that the state telling you that you're putting our whole state in jeopardy from what you've done? What you guys been doing, you've put our whole state, all the schools around our state of North Carolina in big trouble with funding because of your actions. And we gotta get you out of here. And so, and pretty much that's what they saying, you, hey, look, hey, you got to go. We, you start messing with our money, you got to go now. You, you can do whatever you want to do on your own time, that's gonna mess up your own dime, you know, but just not on ours. You know, we, we ain't gonna let you do it. You know, we got enough troubles in our schools around this state that we gotta fix, there's a lot of things going on. And we don't need you with the one, the only, the three schools you had to damage all the schools around in our hundred-county state. No way, no sir, you got to go, you out of here, we, we ain't even gonna sit here. That's why it was a ten to one, like, you got to go, I don't care what you talking about. Hey, listen, those kids, we got traditional public schools. Those kids will be fine, if they can't go to not another charter school, if they won't be able to enter into another charter school in 2023, 2022, 2023 school year, whatever, they'll be able to go into a public school. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, whatever, they'll be able to go into a public school. So what I'm saying is, and what I've been saying is, the charter schools. You know, if you, you have to really care about what you doing, and I believe when it, you know. When the very first, when you know, when the very first charter school and when they started to come about like that, I believe that, you know. They were built off of that, like they wanted to, you know. And and just my opinion, I believe in charter schools and mad schools and all that is nothing to personally to me, just, just my personal opinion to me. All that does to does is just reduce classroom sizes in public schools. I think when it comes to the inner city, that's what charter schools rarely do, like, you know, so then they, they have more. Uh, the, the students may have a different type of, uh, learning freedom, you know, um. The way that they may learn may be a little different because of the classroom sizes. Um, and those type of schools and that's what they promote and, but, we have to understand something. You're not getting nothing that that different, especially if they just opened up, if they haven't been around that long. Cause they're still under the watchful eye of the state, the state is still on them, they still have to follow. The, the states, uh, regulations and rules and guidelines, they still have to follow them. So they're not doing nothing, they're not like swinging too far from the tree. They, they, they not going out there too far, trust me, you know, because if they go too far and doing too much. What happened to Torchlight Academy and what happens to a lot of these charter schools, mad schools around this country? They out of here, when they, when they, when they violate state laws. When it to pertain into the education system, so, yeah, ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to touch base with that, I actually. You know, when I did the story, um, about Goldsboro High School. That was like emergency situation, I had to put that story out and I had to say something. But but this story was what was the story I was gonna present first, but that. That story about Goldsboro High School and that, you know, the infestation inside of the high school, I had to, I, I, I. I just had to speak on that, that, that really like touched me and bothered me deeply, you know, like. It bothered me, and I know that in schools around the country that some people might have he- hear that story with Goldsboro High School when I spoke on that and. And I hate to veer off topic, but just, I'm just trying to give y'all understanding that. This story was gonna be the first sto- this story was gonna be the story I was gonna give to you guys on March the tenth. But, uh, yeah, the Goldsboro High School in North Carolina, I had to, I had to do that. And it touched me deeply when I heard that the children, the students were trying to, you know, to. They, they went forward to the, to the, to the, uh, to the city council. And the other thing that bothered me deeply about that was like, why did some, why, why didn't? Why did someone direct them to the city council, why didn't they direct them to the school board? Why didn't they direct them there to the school board meeting, why, so they can speak to them? Why did they get, why didn't, why didn't someone tell them to go to the right place? Because the city council saying they couldn't do anything, they couldn't override the school board. Why would they send the kids that way though? With knowing that the school board has a meeting and you can send the children, send them there and let them speak. They could have got it off right then, why, why did you send them the other way? You know, so, eh, that, that's just my whole thing, you know, I don't know all the intricacies to that right there, but. It's just still bothering me deeply that them students, you know, they, 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 they got tired and they had to go and speak. So what I'm saying is, North Carolina has a lot of issues, you know, with their schools, and there's some great schools around the state. And you know, not all are bad, but it's the bad apples, it's the bad apples I say that sit on school boards. Um, the bad apples and superintendents that are not equipped. And mainly when the, mainly when COVID hit, what you start to find. Is the curtain been pulled back from a lot of issues when we talked about education, because. I don't know if everybody, how much everybody's paid attention, but I'm gonna tell you what. I've reported on a lot of it, and some of it, it was so much happening with the schools around the country in twenty twenty-one, I couldn't catch every. Every, everything, so it was like, it was like snack, like grab whatever I can grab because it was so. I mean, when I tell you, ladies and gentlemen, that every week. Multiple, uh, superintendents of schools were being fired quick for whatever different reasons. Uh, state, uh, school superintendents were getting fired for whatever reason. Uh, the teachers, then we know that when we hear about the, the, the shootings in the schools, that just was. That just took it overboard, but it was so many issues happening within the schools. Just, just, just in twenty twenty-one alone, you know? Um, it seems to like kinda die quiet down now, you know, this year a little bit. But man, when I tell you last year, it was back to back, I was getting emails from everywhere all around this country from Ohio. Kansas. Oh God, uh, Montana, California. Man, I'm, when I tell you Philadelphia, I'm saying everywhere it was coming, everywhere. You know, and not just to mention, I'm here in North Carolina, so whatever issues that were happening here, I was reporting, so, uh. Kentucky, and I mean, just everywhere, it was just things going on everywhere, would I, it would have your head spinning. You know, and it's like, why, why, how could I not report on those things and shine light on some of the things? Because I noticed that when it comes to education, a lot of, everybody was, you know, so steady in the zone of trying to figure out. Their life throughout this pandemic and what they're gonna do and then the situation with the schools and. Their remote learning and things, but there were so many other issues happening on top of that that followed. You had, uh, school bus drivers around the country ha- uh, you know, pretty much having issues and shutting down and protesting. It's striking and things of that nature, the teachers continuously even today with the teachers. You having teachers and, uh, you having teachers right now in Minnesota protesting. Because they wanna see better for the students and they want better for, for, they want to be treated better and fairly, they want. They want change, folks are tired and looking for change. And everybody keeps going over the teachers, overlooking the teachers, devaluing them. You cannot do that, you can't say that we, we value our teachers, but there's not, it's not reflecting in the classroom. It's not reflecting when they look and look at the resources, it's not reflecting when they look at their paychecks. You know what I mean, it's, it's, it's not reflecting how, wh- when they look at their, their school versus another school on the other side of the town. They, they don't see it. So you can't keep playing these games and people are tired, through all industries around the country, people are tired. People are standing up and they're like enough is enough, you cannot keep manipulating and playing on people's, uh. You can't, like I like to say, you can't keep tap dancing on folks minds, you can't keep playing around on people's brain. And thinking that is okay and playing with the mind and things and thinking like, oh, yeah, we, 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 we love our teachers, we love education. But there doesn't reflect in the state when they see it, like, well, why? We're not seeing and getting the resources at our schools. Why we having, you know? People like this, Donnie McQueen, why, why would they even allow to stay around so long? Why would they allowed to even get to a third school, to have a third school? Why wasn't that caught a long time ago with them and cutting that off? Before it even got so deep and they got, they, they received three million dollars in funding? From a management company that McQueen runs, that oversees. Uh, that manages Torchlight Academy and the three others, and the two other schools that they had? Like, how did that get so far? Why didn't this, why didn't the state ban, stop that and put a, put a, put a, pump the brakes on that? But for whatever, they caught it eventually. And they out of here, and I hope that, that Don, Don McQueen and no one affiliated with him ever gets to open up another school again. I hope that they put that type of stipulation on them, to never be able to open up another school again. You know, because you can't keep going around doing this to children, you can't keep, you, you, you need to have your business in order. There's no one else that you can blame, if you were the executive, uh. Yeah, you know, eh, eh, uh, Donnie McQueen, you the executive director, your wife is the, is the principal. And you guys, both you and your wife are over the, the, the management company that managed, oversee the business dealings for the school. Like how much and of, if that ain't none, I mean, Jesus Christ. You talking about a conflict of interest, sheesh, they were way out there. Um, but yeah, Torchlight Academy, um, the oldest charter school in the state of North Carolina since, uh, what was that, since nineteen ninety-seven? Yeah, nineteen ninety-seven or nineteen ninety-nine, yeah, so, uh. Yeah, they, they, they're shutting them down, they revoking their charter, and I'm glad about it, you know? But that's my time, ladies and gentlemen, this is, um, Space Invaders TV and, um. Peace and blessings to all y'all, make sure y'all share the channel, tell a friend, tell a friend. Don't keep all of this information that I share with you guys just for yourself, shiver it around with like minds, you know, this is. A channel where, an informative channel was like each one reach one, each one teach one, um. I, I, everything that I say is in Bible, but. The stories that I present to you are true stories and I always like to share where I receive my. Information from, and I allow you to fact check me and you go behind me and, you know, I don't, I don't throw. No extra sauce on nothing, I tell you the story just what it is and I just let you know from my point of view as an adult. How I feel about the situation and allow, you know, you to understand what's going on, well, whatever situation. That I talk about, whether it be education, things going on in the community, the city, state, national, you know. International, like whatever it is, I, I, I present it because I understand that we as people, we get bogged down. Our day-to-day life where, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to do what we trying to do for our families or whatever. And some information can go overlooked over your head, sometimes, you know, when it comes to this education, I understand. You got a family, you got your children, um, you may know with certain events that may be going on at your child's school. But then it may be things going on in your county concerning the schools that may go totally over your head that you don't know. And that's why I come in and I may present it to you. Then like I've always say, it may be a lot of issues that go on, I can't. Some issues go past me, some, some issues I have to let go because I can't, you know? I, I, I come on once a week, so I, I don't have time, you know, to drop stories every single day. But when I do come once a week, you know, you know, sometimes twice a week, like I, like this week, it's been twice. I can, sometimes I, I can drop two shows twice a week, uh, one Thursday, turn around and drop one on Friday, you know? Um, sometimes it just works out like that and, um. But I, 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 a lot of stories go over my head, you know, a lot of stories I have to let them go because I can't. You know, I, my research, when I do my research, I'm like, wow, I don't have time to research all of this, you know? So I give you what I can and, um, and in hopes that when I give you. The information on one topic that you will take that topic and then you'll go do your research and then you will come and find. And then the things that I may see, some of the same things I see, you will soon see, you know? Um, but that's what it's about here, Space Invader, it's not about bashing people. Or anything like that, it's just about shining a light and holding the, um, people's feet to the fire, you know, making them. Holding them accountable for their actions, you know, um, especially when we talking about the education, most definitely. Transparency, accountability, you know, that, that, that's, that's what it's about, um. When it comes to that education, be honest and upfront, you know, do, do what you're there to do, you know, um. Because as we all know, the people who get paid the lowest when we talking on education. Is the people that's on the school board and they have the most say so, they get paid the least. So you're not getting paid any money like that, so you either there to do the job or you're there not to do the job. You either there to do the job because you really care. Eh, or you, or you there for your own personal gain. And when you don't see the job getting done that should be done, then you have to understand that it's, they're there for their own personal gain, it ain't nothing else. Cause they don't get paid anything, so they're there to position theirselves for whatever, and that's just it. A lot of these people that sit on these, these boards, these school boards around the country, they have other jobs, they have full-time jobs. That, the, the school boards is not their full-time job, I hope it's not, you know? Uh, or maybe somebody if they retired, yeah, they can go do that, but, you know, if you're not retired. That's not your full-time job, trust me, they're not getting paid, they get paid once a month and that ain't much at all. You, you, you definitely not surviving off of that today. So it's like you either there to do the job or not. And you there for, you know, and if you're not, you're there for your own personal gain. And that's just it, and that's why I hold the feet to the fire when I speak on these things, you know? But you figure, why the, why have the folks that get paid the least have the most say so? Don't make sense, you would think the board would consist of teachers. The people who are boots on the ground, you know what I mean? And you got superintendents, they come in here, these people, man, they get this money when I'm, what I've noticed. In the past two years, the superintendents were making money, and then when, 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 when it, when it gets too hot in the kitchen. They haul tail, and that's what's been going on, they haul tail, or they've been filing up so bad that. They, they just get fired, you know, and that's what's been going on around the country for the past two years, man, thanks to COVID. A lot of things have been, been revealed, you know? And mainly in education, if everybody's been paying attention, in education, a lot has been revealed, man, in the past two years. But, um, yeah, I'm not gonna hold you guys any longer, cause I can go on and on. But, uh, that's my time, folks, this is Space Invaders TV, I thank you for watching, until next time.